I call this meeting of the North Adams City Council to order for August 26, 2025. This meeting can be viewed live on Northern Berkshire Community Television Station, Channel 1303, and will be posted to their website as soon as possible. We will also be live streaming on YouTube at HTTPS, www.youtube.com/atNorthAdams. Just click on the live and then on the 2025.08.26 City Council Meeting. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer?
Here.
Bona?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Fitch?
Here.
Morrow is on her way.
Yes, Council Morrow is on her way.
Alaskowitz?
Here.
Sapienza?
Here.
Shade?
Present.
Wilkinson?
Here.
Eight present at the moment.
Eight present at the moment, and we expect the ninth. We have a quorum. Okay, a moment of silent remembrance, please stand. And the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Councilor, let the record show Councilor Morrow is present. We have all nine members. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing for Council Paper Number 12,509, a petition from National Grid, Project Number 311-55114, requesting a public hearing for new pole location on Bonner Avenue and to lay and maintain underground laterals intersecting public ways as required to make connections with poles and buildings. I'm going to file without objection. We do have a letter from Mr. Lascarbo on this.
We do.
We do, okay. Cards were mailed to the abutters, and tonight we have a representative from National Grid, Mr. DeRose. Would you like to tell us what this project's about, please?
Good evening. Nick DeRose, National Grid. We are installing one pole. Pole three is the last one on the road, so we need one more pole. Pole four, it's 165 feet farther down for a new house going in on the end of the street.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the council that has any questions for Mr. DeRose? Okay, anyone from the public that would like to speak regarding this matter? Okay, if nobody wishes to speak, I will now close the public hearing. The public hearing is now closed. Thank you, Mr. DeRose.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Motion to approve the city council meeting minutes of June 24, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the meeting minutes, July 8, 2025, city council meeting minutes. Motion to approve.
They're moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Abstain.
Thank you. Councilor Green abstains. Okay, any discussion? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve the city council meeting minutes for July 22, 2025.
I'm moved to approve these minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing of visitors on the agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you have reached your two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended. And as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. And we're doing this a little bit differently. If you wish to speak on an agenda item, please raise your hand. I will acknowledge you, and then you can step up to the mic. Nobody on hearing of visitors, okay. Council Paper Number 11,995-1, in ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the City of North Adams, Chapter Z, zoning, 9.4, yeah, 9.4, smart growth overlay district, sections 9.4.3.2 through 9.4.5.1, referred to the planning board for a joint public hearing held on August 11, 2025. This was approved by the planning board. Do we have a motion?
Moved to pass to a second reading and publish.
Motion to pass to a second read and publish. We have a second. Any discussion?
I'll be abstaining.
Okay, we have one abstention. No further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Council Paper Number 12,480, a communication from Councilor Fitch requesting time to discuss water safety and quality in the City of North Adams, postponed from the meeting of July 22, 2025. Councilor Fitch, do you have an update or a motion for us?
Yes, whereas I would love to have this discussion about water quality tonight and a presentation from the administration, health has gotten in the way of that. There is a health issue with somebody over at the Public Services Department, so thus prohibiting the conversation tonight. So I have, in collaboration with Mayor Maxi, spoke with her about this. We would love to slide this to the first meeting of October, which is October 14, and hopefully this will be the last postponement.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone to the meeting of October 14.
Second.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Council Paper Number 12,502, in ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the City of North Adams, Chapter Z, Appendix B, entitled Dimensional Regulation Schedule, referred to the planning board for a joint public hearing held on August 11, 2025. And this was approved by the planning board. Do we have a motion?
Moved to pass to a second reading and publish. Second.
Okay, motion and a second, and Councilor Wilkinson.
I will be abstaining on this.
Thank you.
I will also be abstaining.
Okay, we have two extensions, Councilor Fitch and Councilor Wilkinson. Okay, any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Council Paper Number 12,506, communication from Councilor Fitch requesting an update from the administration on the state of compliance for the airport and Airport Commission, referred to the administration with at the meeting of July 22, 2025. I'm going to call on Councilor Fitch.
Thank you. Yes, a reminder, I put this forward a few meetings ago with the hope of addressing airport issues. We've heard a whole lot about the airport this year. We've heard a whole lot of opinions about the airport this year, and what we were hoping to do is to have this presentation and get some facts out there and get the opinions of our legal representation out there. So that is hopefully what we are going to have tonight, and it looks like we are. So without further ado, through the chair to the mayor. Thank you.
Alsat, President?
Yes, go ahead, Mayor Maxi.
So, good evening, everyone. We are going to present a quick PowerPoint to talk about the hairman in West Airport. We're going to talk about accomplishments, work in process, our long-term goals, our current financial status, and then Attorney Bard will talk about the grant assurances, which has been something that has been talked quite a bit here on the council floor. So to start, we do have fun things going on at the airport. This was a group of students who came over, a group of the public who came over to visit. The Airport Commission, over the years, with the administration, the FAA and MAC, have been working diligently on many projects. So as we all know, we've completed runway and taxiway maintenance, which includes crack filling, sealing, surface treatment, and new markings. We did a completed installation of new gate controllers to fix repetitive failures of gates one and five. You recently approved that grant assurance. We've completed repair or rebuild of the northeast hangar, including a new roof and closed out that grant. The hangar is fully leased with an annual income of around $18,000. We've also acquired with a grant, a new tractor with blades for mowing and plowing. We have an RFP currently out for the restaurant space. We've approved lease assignments from Blue Skies Acquisition, which is close to an $11,000 new revenue stream. We've hosted the McCann Aviation Club to do demos at the midnav aircraft, which was very interesting, and the kids were very engaging. So we also have extended turboprops jet fuel lease for a final 10 years. We've provided space in the admin building for two flight simulators. We've accepted a gift of a new car for transient pilot use. We've secured the Shamrock Building against vandalism, and we've installed Spectrum Internet into the hangar and the Shamrock in preparation of installing a surveillance system. So those are all things that the commission has been working on despite changes in the commission structure. So there's a picture of the kids, as well as the airport space overlooking the runway. Here is a picture of the northeast hangar when it was destroyed. You can see that it was in great disrepair, and this is what it looks after, thanks to the FAA and the MAC and the city council for appropriating the city share. Looks pretty good. So work at the airport never ends, and the dedicated commissioners, no matter how much time they've spent, it's an ongoing process. So our current work in process is to obtain approval for revisions to our capital plan for the airport, to authorize engineering design for a new T6 hangar build. Grant application is due in April, to install a surveillance camera system throughout the complex, to hire, hopefully, Hewison Aviation for airport management. We'd hope to have that discussion at the last meeting, but we did not have a quorum, so that conversation continues, and to approve and sign a lease agreement for a cell tower construction that again got postponed because we didn't have a quorum. We are also in the process of establishing an evaluation committee for review of proposals, and the commission will evaluate proposals and enter into a lease agreement for the restaurant. So as you can see, this commission has very pointed, targeted deadlines of what they're working on. Things that are currently ongoing, we've discussed this many times, is to fill vacant commissioner positions. With the stress level at the airport caused by certain individuals, that has become very, very difficult. We are also working on event planning, which has been a struggle also for the commission because people don't want to participate until behaviors are corrected or removed from the airport, but the commission is very committed to engaging more of the public at the airport and sharing what good our airport does. They are focused on continuing education for workshops for local high schools, and they really want to address the complaints and disruptive behavior at the airport only caused by a few individuals. Long-term goals, again, increase traffic, increase revenue to improve other operational improvements and growth, maybe identify friends of an airport and form a fundraising nonprofit arm of the commission, develop a solid marketing plan to tell people how great we are instead of all the negative press that we get caused by a few individuals, encourage traffic currently landing in Pittsfield to land in North Adams and to have an active administration building, to really transfer airport files from City Hall to the admin building so the commission can have a working office and the soon-to-be airport manager can have all the documents at their fingertips, redesign the electrical outlets on the tie-downs, obtain more grant funds for a fuel farm, and to really focus on additional hangar construction. I know it's a question of, is the airport profitable or not? Please keep in mind, the city appropriates about $50,000 in our annual budget, as you know. You can see in fiscal year 2024, we ended in $62,000 in the black, and then in fiscal year '25, as of June 30, 2025, we had an ending balance of $86,000, almost $87,000. We are also very, very happy and appreciative of the support we get from the FAA and the MAC. As you can see on the screen, we've done runway and tailway, I think that's the correct term, maintenance, gate controllers, the tractor blades, and most importantly, the northeast hangar. So that's pretty impressive of the money that we've secured for a commission or a city that is considered to be, by some, corrupt and not in compliance. I feel at this point that the administration needs to somewhat defend the Airport Commission and all of those people who worked so hard to make it a great place. We only hear about the negative things. So we've had some misstatements in open forum that we are in violation of grant assurances, which is not true. Attorney Bard will speak about that. We've also been, I've been accused of putting an extreme amount of pressure on airport commissioners so that they resign. I have simply aired the facts that, one, most importantly, that the stress of this job lately has been unbearable, and my commissioner's health is more important than a vote, but also that you have to vote in the best interests of the City of North Adams, and I want to only appoint people who can continue to do that. The airport manager left because he believed the city and the commission were acting improperly. I don't know where that statement came from. The city and the commission are giving preferential treatment. We try to treat everyone equally, and the city and commission are allowing spaces to be occupied without paying rent, which is a myth. We had a problem with the lease. We didn't secure the lease, as we talked about several times, and we opened that up for people to rent or to use for the winter so we could get more planes out of the weather. So to me, I think that shows that the Airport Commission is really working with the airport community. Statements that have been made on the council floor, which I've been grinding my teeth over over the last seven months, I have great concern that the law is being broken. We are audited regularly every single year. Our city solicitor has sent you an opinions on anything that you've requested, so I'd like to know what law that we're breaking. There's been two investigations and one going on. We have not been part of any investigation as of yet, so that is not true. Statements that the commission voted to accept a proposal. In that proposal, I believe it was not identified that there were five jobs, and the mayor wanted them to change their vote. I absolutely did want them to change their vote because they did not yield to a subcommittee that had reviewed the RFP, and the commission did not have all the facts, as many of them admitted they hadn't opened their email and reviewed the committee report and/or the procurement officer, who at the time was Stacy Abusi, her opinion on the RFP. The problem is everyone's leaving. Well, the problem is people are leaving because they're sick of the drama. We are losing money and every single day. Well, as you can see from our P and L, we actually made some money this year. Even if you took the $50,000 off the plate, we were in the black. The airport is crashing. I take offense to that. We have a safe and secure airport. Yes, we have issues, but as you can see from what the commission has targeted as project, this is a commission and a committee that is working for the betterment of the complete airport. So what do I want you to consider? I really want you to consider, for seven months, you've listened to the rhetoric of certain individuals in the audience tonight, and without really consulting with the commission. I want you to fact-check. I want you to work with the administration before you make boisterous comments on the floor. I want us to support our commission. It's a tough job. It's not one of a committee that you just float in and float out. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes education, research that happens, and the commission as a whole feels that this governing body doesn't support them because you've entertained the rhetoric on the floor. Agencies like the FAA and the MassDOT know about our personality complex. They've been here. They say we have a safe, safe airport. They say we have a beautiful airport, and we're doing things the right way. Councilor Bard will talk a little bit about the grant assurances more tonight, but you got to stop entertaining it, folks. I know that the wording isn't exactly what you want, but those are things that are handed to us from the FAA and MassDOT, and they wouldn't continue to give us money if we were so bad and corrupt and incompetent. As we've talked about many times, the Airport Commission is its own little separate body, and they have different rules than my other commissions, but we certainly are in tuned with the airport. And the commissioner, the chair of the Airport Commission, is very committed to working with the other commissioners and the community members of the airport and the community at large and this governing body to help grow that airport. So what do I want from you? What do I hope for today? I hope we end this back-and-forth banter about the airport, and we give the volunteers on our boards and commissions the respect and support they deserve. You continue to ask questions but obtain information before you speak on the council floor and add to the spin of us being such bad people. You consider carefully the decisions to support private interests. You consider where these motives are coming from. We hear time and time again that we are an untapped economic resource. We currently employ about 97 people, according to the last survey we had done. We need to come together and work together and support the Airport Commission. I will say, overall, you've been great in appropriating money. You've been great in getting over the whole appointment of commissioners, but enough is enough. I'm having a really a hard time getting people to serve on the Airport Commission that will keep the best interests of the city and the airport in the forefront. I'm having a hard time retaining the commissioners that I have. I'm having a hard time finding city employees to work with the Airport Commission because of this. And quite frankly, it is becoming a health issue. The undue stress that is put on by my staff and the Airport Commission's is not acceptable, and I need it to stop, and I need this governing body to support that. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Attorney Bard to talk about the grant assurances.
Okay, would you like to entertain a couple of questions from the counselors?
Whatever your preference is.
Okay, Councilor Blackmer?
Okay, mine's not a question, mine's a comment. One, we include open forum and hearing of visitors. Per the SJC, we cannot shut them down even if we don't like what they say. So I kind of take a little bit of offense. I feel like you're attacking us in all, other than, the only thing that I have disagreed about the airport is the fact that I think that we should be approving the commissioners. And I've been blatant about that, and that is my only issue. So I feel like this is, you know, you don't want to, we have to entertain what they say. We have to be here, we have to actively listen. I don't agree with most of what's been said, and I don't like being lumped in with that. So I guess I'm at that. I mean, pretty much when it's come to the airport, you've had my support.
Thank you for that, and I appreciate it.
I don't know about anybody else, but I, most of us have not argued over or brought up issues other than the appointing of the commissioners. And also, we, either we get rid of open forum and hearing of visitors, in which case I will not vote for that because we do want to hear from the public. So the only way, we have to listen, we have to let them speak.
And may I? Council Blackmer?
Yes, go ahead.
I don't want to debate that with you, and I agree. I want public input, but enough's enough.
Councilor Green?
Yeah, I was wondering if you could bring up the, it says correcting the record points of council consideration, the last page of that.
14?
That one, yeah. If you look at number two, it's not numbered, the council liaison to the airport, that would be me, has not spoken to the chairman of the Airport Commission during the entire period of this assignment. Who said that?
That was my understanding from Chairman Haskins.
Okay, so the thing is, it's not true.
Okay.
And the thing is, all you have to do, one thing is just go through the video of the meeting. I attended 11 meetings as a liaison, 11. Some people on liaison do one or none, and I would get emails back and forth. I spoke to the chairman many, 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 many times. So your assumption is dead wrong.
Well, I apologized. That's what I was told, and I will strike that from the presentation.
Know that, you can check the videos. I can give you the emails or phone numbers when they called. The other thing, let's go back one more page.
Sure, are we going to 13?
The page before.
12?
13.
13.
It's statements from the, that the commission voted to accept a proposal that would create five jobs at 80,000 to 90,000 dollars per year and $480,000 revenue, and the mayor wants to change them, wants them to change their vote. Again, it's in the video. I was at the meeting when they opened up the RFP. If you read through the RFP, you will see it references the job. You will see it reference the revenue. I don't know why you could say that without checking that out. It's in video, it's in writing, that there are five jobs, five piston mechanic jobs. It's a business that was going to be started, I believe it's on page two or three, the whole description of the business. That's five jobs that people in North Adams could have, getting $100,000 a year. That's a half a million dollars. This was two years ago. The people of North Adams have lost a million dollars in income, and we've lost revenue. You said you're getting $1,800 annually. I believe, you can check the record, I believe it was $24,000 in the RFP, correct?
Very close to that, yes.
So this is less, and this was only been, it hasn't been for 18 months. It's been for how many? A couple, three, four? How many months have you collected the $1,500?
Probably, I think, three.
Three months. Okay, so that's $5,000. We lost $60,000 and a million dollars worth of money. So I don't know how you could say these things. That's what happened. Wait, I'm not done. I have the floor. You said you did not want it because the subcommittee did not, the commissioners did not yield to the subcommission. And the commissioners are the ones that vote for it, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so they can vote who, how they want, correct? It's a recommendation. Like, if you recommend somebody for a job, it doesn't mean you have to take them. You gave a recommendation from the subcommittee. Even the people in the subcommittee, people voted no. Did you know that? There were two commissioners and two office people. Even the commissioners voted no. And so it came back. And so it, it came back, it was a no vote, then it was rescinded. It was not a good vote because the commissioner, that was chairman at the time, abstained. And he brought in the vote. And you know, and I know, that the, the chairman who abstained cannot bring a vote to reverse it. But the vote ended up being one yes and one no. That's not a majority, so that's. So this whole thing, when I read these things to correct the record, make sure the record's correct. We'll go back. I have more things and it goes into the grant assurance. Thank you.
May I?
Yes, you may.
So Counselor Breen, the whole point about me asking the commission to rescind or retract their vote was because there were flaws in the RFP. And we identified that in the RFP review process.
What were the flaws?
There, there, one, they felt that they didn't cast the net wide enough, that there could have been more options.
There was enough.
One respondent.
Okay, so what you're saying is, that's not a flaw in the RFP, that's the distribution.
Correct. Well, that's, that's a flaw in the process.
So it's not over the RFP. What was the other part?
It was a flaw in the process.
Why didn't you throw it out?
We did throw it out.
No, you didn't. They voted on it.
Okay. We're getting too much back and forth.
Well, I just wanna hear the reason it was thrown out.
Okay, let, let her respond, please.
It was mostly around process and the construction of the RFP.
Okay. Not anybody that drew it up or anybody that presented one?
Well, there also was a question whether our current airport manager helped fill out the application to the RFP, which is unethical.
Okay.
That, that was a grave concern for, for the administration as well.
I was at the three meetings. I don't remember anybody saying that. I was at the three meetings.
It's your memory ver- It's your memory versus what I've been told.
Okay.
But I would be happy to discuss the other points with you.
Okay.
Happy to, as we, we have had discussions around that.
I would suggest that if you have further questions, that you would schedule a meeting with the mayor at some point, Counselor Breen, and discuss this, yeah.
Again, the bottom line comes, making a decision in the best interest of the airport and having a commission that was fully armed with all of the data, which at the time, they weren't. They had it, but some of them acknowledged that they didn't read it or didn't understand. So with that.
Okay. Moving on, Counselor Shade.
Thank you. I wanna reiterate something the Counselor Blackmer said in that most of us here have never not supported the commissioners or the airport itself. It's always been about process or specific processes, like appointing commissioners. And I feel the same way that she does in that when we've brought this up, my issue personally has always been about process, about we have an ordinance that says one thing, that it conflicts with other things, but also MGL says one thing, these other things say one thing. Being on a commission or a board is a very difficult thing and it's a great service to the city. And anyone who does it, I applaud them and thank them continuously for the work that they put in. And I want that to be acknowledged because that's very important. People on boards and commissions don't get enough credit for the work they do and they don't get paid for it. It's a public service. They do it because they love what they're doing. They do it because they wanna make our city a better city. So I just wanna put that out there, that yes, we do need to thank our boards and commissioners far more than we do. We don't appreciate them enough. They do need to get far more credit. With them feeling not supported, I've never heard them tell us that they don't feel supported. Also never seen them come here to talk to us and tell us. Tonight would have been a great night for them to be here to have a discussion with us while we're presenting information on this. And I think that's a missed opportunity that I'd love to have corrected in the future, to have them here to talk to us. Because I do support everyone who serves on a board and commission in this city. It is a very difficult thing to do and I appreciate all of them. And I wanna make that a point on the record, that these people are not forgotten and that we do want them to continue to serve.
Okay, let's go with Counselor Bona.
Couple things, and you know, you've heard me say this before about, you know, where I think the airport should go. You know, it says that it would employ ninety-seven people. Well, those are gonna be there with or without it being private or public because those are people that are relying on the, the airport being there. The, you know, to me, if it's making fifty thousand, eighty thousand, hundred thousand, personally, I think it's not worth the headache. And, you know, the city doesn't have the time to be dedicating. I personally don't feel it affects enough of our own residents for the time and effort we put into it. I know others will disagree with that. I, I'm not saying get rid of the airport. I'm just saying for the city to be running it and managing it, I just think it's taking valuable time out of our staff to be dealing headaches, whatever. And for the amount that it is profiting. The, as for saying what you want to be the best interest of the city, I mean, that's an opinion. You know, that everyone has been, everybody, when we vote different, we're all voting, we don't vote, I don't wanna say there's ever a wrong vote. We're voting what we believe is the best interest of the city, just as state reps and state politicians vote what they believe is the best for the state and national. And we don't have to agree with them. We can strongly disagree with them, but I would like to think that most of them are feel, voting what they feel is the best interest. Just opinions collide. So what your best interest may be different than other best interests. And, you know, not saying they're right or wrong, but just because one may disagree doesn't mean they don't believe it's the best interest. I still, again, if it ever came in front of us, if it had to come in front of us to sell the airport, I would be the first one probably to be raising my hand to support it because this isn't just under this administration. I can tell you four administrations ago that I remember a commissioner coming in and speaking to us and he was very upset because at the time, that mayor removed him from the Airport Commission because he voted, he disagreed with something the mayor wanted at that time and he voted against it. And the mayor just removed him, like, and he came in and, you know, he brought it to the council's attention. At that time, council supported the mayor, but it's been going on for four administrations that I have served under. Personally, I don't know if it's gonna go away. As much as you want it to go away, I've been seeing it for nearly thirty years and I just find what we make from it and the time and energy it takes from City Hall, is it worth it for us to be running it, so.
Thank you. Counselor Blackmer?
I just kind of wanna counter and agree with Counselor Bona a little bit. Our, I, our job is to make the decisions that we think serves the best interest of the city as a whole. And where the airport may or may not fall into that, we have an obligation to be informed of the different situations and to do our research. But supporting the airport, it's like supporting any department. I feel like we have to look at it as the whole city and not just the airport. So I kind of, a little bit of pushback on that. That's all.
Mayor, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up with Counselor Shade about your comment about it would be nice if the airport was, commissioners were here. The chair of the Airport Commission was scheduled to present today. But I was presented somewhat of an ultimatum of, I don't wanna present tonight. I think it's ridiculous. Let's just keep going versus I'm gonna resign. And I think he's a good commissioner. I think he's dedicated to the airport. And I think the stress of preparing for this presentation was too much. And I'd rather have a solid commissioner than put them here. And yes, you're all, you know, being supportive, but the question of the scrutiny and the accusations that they've done something wrong and et cetera. And the pressure cooker at the airport, I mean, overall, the climate is good there, but we can't get people to engage. And we can't get people to engage because of all this rhetoric that they keep reading in the press about what goes on here. And, and Counselor Blackmer, I agree, the public needs to speak. Who, no matter who you are, what you, whether you agree or disagree, I agree with that. But this has been going on for a long time, folks. So that's where we're at. May I turn it over to Counselor Attorney Bard?
Yes, you may.
Attorney Bard, welcome.
Mr. President, members of the council, first of all, it's a pleasure to be here. I've been your city solicitor for a number of years. I've been present on video. And now I'm here in person. It's great. And I'm looking at this guy here and I'm wondering if I can get ahold of the hairstylist who might be able to do something with my hair. I don't know how old that picture is, but looks a little different today. So I might start with the point that Counselor Blackmer raised and I think a couple of others have raised it. So of course, that SJC decision, Supreme Judicial Court, and a very interesting, your lawyer, and I just general reading the town of Southborough made completely clear that the public has the right to speak if the community chooses to have a public, public comment session, which most communities do, and I don't hear the mayor saying that you should get rid of it. And what the SJC also made clear is that you can't try to, what happened was that the chair of that particular select board was essentially trying to cut off the speaker because the chair didn't like what the speaker was saying. I think what the mayor is getting at here is, so clearly, having said what I just said, as a council, you can't censor what people are saying. What you can do is you can comment back on what they're saying. And what I'm hearing, and of course, I don't watch the videos. I get everything second and third hand, but I've heard enough of it to believe that you're hearing a lot of stuff that is simply not true. You're hearing a lot of lies, hearing a lot of fabrications. And I think at some point, I think counselors who are supportive of the airport, and from what I hear, you're all supportive and I understand some of you might think it should be private, but one way or the other, supportive of the airport. And it's not for me to tell you what to say, but certainly if I were to hear lies sitting in a council chair, I'd wanna say when the speaker's done, that's a lie. Let's see some facts. Because I've read a lot of outrageous statements that simply are true. So let me go to one of them. And that is that grant violations will cost the city millions of dollars. So I have reviewed your grant contracts and I don't blame you if none of you have because they're boring, they're lengthy. There's the contract, then their attachments, then their FAA regulations and so on and so forth. There are very few provisions in there that are clearly the kinds of provisions that are violated. They're just, I mean, yes, sure, but they're operating manual kinds of things. But the, the, the black and white kinds of provisions that are in there, if someone wants to make that allegation that it's being, those provisions are being violated and it's gonna cost the city millions, they should call out those provisions and they should point to the areas where the city or the Airport Commission might be fined because the contracts do not call for fines. What they call for is remediation. I mean, the state DOT, the, the state airport, Mass Aeronautics, the FAA is not interested in fining, is not interested in shutting down airports. They're interested in making sure the airports are managed safely. So if they see something that appears to be a violation, certainly if they see something that appears to be, that appears to endanger anybody, whether it's people in the aviation community or on the ground, they would certainly step in. So when you hear something like that, you may wanna ask for some facts because there are none. Simply said, there are no facts because if there were, we all would have heard about it. I would have heard of it, about it from the mayor. You would have heard of it, about it from a lot of people. And the, the idea that, similar point, but the allegation that the Airport Commission and the city are violating conditions, the contract, again, simply not true. So the problem is that there are a variety of inflammatory comments being made from, from citizens and some aren't residents. And they're simply not true. And you may be aware of a lawsuit that was recently addressed in a decision of the Superior Court in Berkshire, having to do with three co-tenants of a, of one of the city-owned hangars, at least on city property. And I'm gonna read several provisions from it. It was a decision handed down just this, this July, I believe it was, by Judge Agostini, a long time, I will say, Berkshire County resident. And there are three provisions here that I think are, so by the way, I should say, the parties are Brian Doyle through his organization, Michael Malazzo versus Rougeau Rehab and Derek Rougeau. So I think these points are, and I'm not gonna go through the facts, I'm not gonna go through the irrelevant, the details that have to do, by the way, with their private relationship. And it turns out nobody was responsible for destroying a hangar on city property, which the mayor told you has now been replaced at the cost of hundreds of millions of dollars in city funds. So one of the first points that the, the judge, obviously impartial, after sitting through the trial, clearly not enjoying it, said the presentations by all the parties were confusing, scattered and lacking substance. No attempt was made to obtain records from the city of North Adams or the various utilities precisely, or the various utilities to precisely identify any and all payments. This litigation is simply a continuation of the party's unrelenting goal to inflict as much pain on the other party and indirectly on the court. In other words, the judge is finding this painful. And frankly, reading this, I was thinking of all of you because you're having to hear these kinds of things and the pain is being inflicted on all of you when you listen, have to listen repeatedly to allegations that have no factual support, which is exactly what the judge found in this case. In another instance, the judge says, "Given the animosity among the parties, their total lack of judgment and disgraceful behavior, I have grave doubts about their credibility." So credibility is the issue here. You're hearing a lot of things in the public comment session and are they credible? Certainly from what I'm hearing, they're not credible. If they were credible, they would be backed up by facts. So this allegation about millions of dollars in fines, really? Okay. Show me the contract language. Show me the violations that would amount to even a half a million dollars in fines, let's say, to pick a random number, let alone millions. And then finally, the judge says, "What is particularly troubling about the claims of all the parties is their sense of delight and satisfaction as reflected in the various videos in insulting and tormenting each other during this period. They would laugh, attempt to make witty responses, conduct themselves of this, as if this was a sport, a form of entertainment." Honestly, I've never seen this kind of language from a judge. And I'm not criticizing the judge. I'm saying it as an expression of his intense frustration at what he had to sit through. And the reason I'm reading this for you is because from what I'm hearing, and I have to say, I'm, excuse me, I'm getting hearsay. I'm not hearing it firsthand, but I've had it repeated frequently enough and I've read other accounts of it, is that it is, there are statements that I think the council should, at times, obviously, I don't wanna tell you what to do, but I think, and again, agreeing with the point that any member of the public can say anything that they want, but there's no reason why members of the council shouldn't ask, do you have some facts to back that up? Or this is the eighth time I've heard you say something like that. Can you tell me your basis for saying, whatever it might be. Obviously, I'm making that up. But I'm here really to tell you that all of the legal claims that have been made, for instance, that we wrote an opinion saying that yes, the mayor does have the authority to appoint airport commissioners and yes, your charter does not require confirmation by the council. I know that was an important question a while back. We wrote an opinion on that. So when questions have come up, we've written legal opinions, but that's not really getting to the point of what you're having to hear on a regular basis. And I'm just here to give you the legal framework for it and to encourage you, as you feel it's appropriate, to occasionally ask for facts to back these allegations. And perhaps that might put an end to some of them. I can't say that that'll be the case. that might put an end to some of them. I can't say that that'll be the case, but certainly going to hope for that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, we have a couple of questions on the floor. Counselor Breen?
Yeah, I have, um, thank you for coming, Counselor Bard. I have like four questions. The first question I have is, in the packet, I don't know if you had partaken in it, but I see it has the Northeast Hangar in it. I'm not sure why that's in here. This is damage that was done 2020, 2019. Is it in here because the RFP was put in by some of the same parties? If, why is this part of the?
Well, I, I'm afraid I was not involved in the preparation, so just as a factual matter, I can't speak to it. I can speculate that either it is the hangar that was damaged, that was the subject of the private lawsuit, or it's similar to the damage that was created. But I, as a factual matter, I don't have the answer.
May I?
Sure.
Counselor Breen, that was put in to show what it was before, what we were left with, and how we've restored it to be beautiful, as you see on the next page. So, it was an illustration of before and after.
Is that the damage?
Yes. If you flip the next page, that's what it looks like now. So, it was just illustrated.
But an RFP was not thrown out because it was damaged, right?
Point of order?
Yep.
Can, can you please speak into the mic there for the people at home?
Yeah, so that was just articulating the work that has been done before, what it looked like, and now with the help of the FAA.
So, it has nothing to do with the RFP?
Not at all.
Not at all. It just added there.
Great, just so you could see before and after.
Okay. Counselor Bard, we had a government subcommittee that you talked about, and one of the things that came up on it, that we got into it, was that you, you basically said if you're, if you're dealing with federal money, or, or the avenue of federal money, that you should really go by their requirements. They're calling the shots. And it, it also is reflected in our current ordinance.
Counselor Breen, can I ask you to speak closer to your mic?
Sure. So, we're, we're both in agreement that if you're using government money, you should go by their requirements.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, so, so, right. The other thing that came up in, in the requirements, it talked about a duration of 20 years. And I remember you saying, there are durations, I don't know of any that could be, possibly be 20 years, that you would be getting back to the mayor and looking at some of those. Again, that's in the video. So, in looking at the grant assurance, the duration is part of it, and it is 20 years, and it goes from the date of award for 20, about 20 years. And it's written right into the, um, the paperwork that came to us. So, when we received the paperwork, it was a commitment by the commissioners and by the mayor that they will do these grant assurance, which are responsibilities and obligations, just like if you've got a mortgage, you don't pay it, they take it back, the, the property, or the money, whatever. So, that's a contract, isn't it? If, if, if you're agreeing to someone that you are going to do these, and you'll get the grant money, that's a contract, a regular contract that we do all the time in business and government. So, if the agreement says you'll have the city councillors approve it, that's a contract. It doesn't have to do with the charter, don't have to do with state law. It's a chosen thing, according to the ordinance, that you said, "I'll do these things because I need the money." That's an obligation. So, verbal, in, in this case, it's written. Shouldn't we go by our obligations?
So, I see what you're getting at. It took me a while to, to get to the point.
Should we go by our obligations?
So, that, so we call those grant agreements, but that has been amended to reflect the fact that in North Adams, that's standard language, it has been amended to reflect the fact that in North Adams, the mayor appoints.
You know, I, I thought so too, until I talked to the Mass DOT. I talked to Mark Miller, and I talked to a couple of other people there, and they said, "No, no, we, we expect entities, towns, and cities to abide by the grant assurance." And they said, "If we ever, ever would give up on that, it would be in writing prior to any concession." And lo and behold, that's even in the grant assurance. They said, "If there's any concessions, it has to be prior." So, I think looking at a burned-out building or whatever is a red herring. We have obligations that the commissioners, the mayor, and I approved the money, knowing that those obligations were going to be met. I should be able to take my, oh, back if you change your mind. Wouldn't you agree?
Well, Counselor, I will go ahead and call, I'll find Mark Miller at DOT and have that conversation with him.
Sure.
Because I felt confident that they changed the terms of the agreement, but I can't tell anything more at this point.
And the other thing is, I know they came out here, and I said, "You came out to go over the grant assurance." They said, "No, absolutely not." And this was a different person. We came out to make sure the airport's safe. And I totally want the airport to be safe. And that's what they came up. They didn't come out to make concessions. So, to assume that they said this, or the grant, I don't care if it goes back to the Mayflower Compact. We've had a current contract two months ago that says, "You can get the money." The mayor left the room saying, "If, then I won't get the money." That's her, her last words going out at that meeting. So, I, I just think people should keep their word.
I will track that down.
Okay. Do you think people should keep their word?
Of course.
Okay.
Just one moment, Mayor. I'm going to have Counselor Shade, you had a question?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair to Attorney Bard. First, thank you for being here in person. It's good to see you live and not on the screen. Couple of things that you said when you were telling us about some of the things going on, I just wanted to bring up a little clarification. You had mentioned millions of dollars on fixing the hangar. It was a little over a million, so not quite millions, more, more like thousands was the city's share. I think the city contributed about 60,000.
If I can clarify, the millions was a quote by someone in the audience, not, not my number.
Got it, thank you. And then also, I wanted to clarify, you had mentioned, you know, when people are speaking during open forum, to have somewhat of a rebuttal. That's not allowed under our current rules and structures. We do not allow for rebuttals. So, just want to point that out there. While it's an idea possibly for the future to answer questions or have rebuttal time, currently in our setup and the way our rules work, we don't allow that to happen, so.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to let the mayor speak, and then I'll have you speak, Counselor Bona.
I just wanted to clarify to Counselor Breen, when I said, "We won't take the, we won't get the money," or whatever you said, I was referring to if you didn't want to approve it, we, that grant assurance, we wouldn't take the money. Just wanted to clarify.
Oh, yeah, I understand. I, I know you're hot and, that's the deal.
I'm hotter now.
Counselor Bona?
Yes, I'm not specific to the airport, but sort of, I guess you could say, open forum. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the chair has the authority to, one, limit redundancy. So, if someone keeps getting repetitive and gets brought up, and brought up, and brought up, that they have the option to say, "Is there any new information? Is there anything new to say?" So, we aren't hearing the same thing over and over, which we have in this case, been hearing things tonight, that we've heard every, multiple times. And also, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe when I was chair, and I did check with the state, and not that I did it, but you had the ability to actually not pick on everybody, because there's, councils have different open forum rules. Some have time limits, some have, there's some that they have to hand in a letter to the chair to say what they're speaking on. And there was one that, which I thought was strange, but the mayor got to decide who would speak in open forum. But there's different rules. And I was told that you cannot deny people from like coming to your meeting, but you can, you don't have to pick on them. You don't have to allow them to talk. So, I don't know if that has changed, maybe that has changed, but that was something I got in writing from the state, you know, several years ago, so.
Counselor Bona, I'm afraid most of those now are problematic.
Yeah.
I mean, most communities just have a sign-up sheet, whoever signs up, or, as you do here, people raise their hands, come forward, whatever it might be. But I think any control outside of that is problematic. Certainly picking and choosing and that sort of thing is, is not going to stand up if challenged.
Okay.
Thank you. I know our current council rules don't specify, basically, you know, we have a time limit. We have a two-minute time limit, which I try to stick to very much. And I do ask, on occasion, that if we do have repetitive information, that people move on, and, you know, if they have something new to add to it, instead of hearing the same thing multiple times, I try to do that as well. But as far as censoring the audience or anything like that, if somebody raises their hand, my opinion is to let them have their two minutes, and just ask them to be as respectful as possible.
And they don't even have to do that now?
They don't, no.
Yeah, tho, those are good practices, yeah.
Counselor Blackmer?
As far as engaging with someone who's made comments, some, we have in the past, when someone has said something like, "Oh, so-and-so just got hired to work there," and they hadn't, we clarified that, or "So-and-so left," no, they didn't. When things like that, or some, something that's very specific and easy to counter, we have done that or allowed it. But the other issue we have to worry about, one, I find the more you engage, it just, it just balloons and goes round and round and isn't productive. Secondly, we also have to be careful that we don't border on deliberating, particularly if it's open forum, where something that's brought up is not on the agenda, that there's no assumption that would be talked about. So, if we start engaging back and forth, even if what's being said is false, I, I've always just stayed, tried to stay away from it when I had the gavel. And I think that's part of the reason I've never engaged. When people start talking nonsense, I just give them their two minutes and move on. And that's been how I've responded to this as a council member.
Thank you, Counselor Blackmer. I think we need to move back on to the subject at hand.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you. Council members, nice to see you all.
Thank you, Attorney Bard, appreciate you. Appreciate your time, and thank you for being here.
So, just to conclude, thank you, Counselor Fitch, for trying to clear the air and giving us the opportunity to do so. We look forward to continuing to work positively with the city council, but we are going to be blocking out the static.
Thank you.
I didn't hear that, blocking out what?
Static.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, moving on.
Counselor Sapienza?
Yes, Counselor?
Just a quick comment, just in conclusion. I wanted to bring this to council floor to get facts out there, to get some clarification. I feel comfortable that we got that clarification tonight, and I feel comfortable with what I heard. So, I do hope that we can move forward and continue to support the airport.
Thank you, I hope so too. Council Paper Number 12,005,09, An Order Granting Permission for New Single-Owned Pole on Bonner Avenue, Project Number 31155114, and to lay and maintain underground laterals in or intersecting public ways as required to make connections with the poles and buildings. Do we have a motion?
Move to grant.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Blackmer? Yes. Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Faleskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. Okay, I'm going to read the two papers, and then I'm going to set a public hearing time. And this is the first one, Council Paper Number 12,005,13, Petition from National Grid, Project Number 31165216, requesting a public hearing for two, two relocations of jointly-owned pole locations on Ashton Avenue, and to lay and maintain underground laterals in or at, intersecting public ways as required to make connections with poles and buildings. And I'm going to read 12,005,14, Petition from National Grid, Project Number 30976048, requesting a public hearing for new singly-owned pole location on Massachusetts Avenue. And the rest of the language is similar to Council Paper Number 12,513. I am going to set an open hearing for the meeting of September 9th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. So, that is the next council meeting. Any discussion? Counselor Blackmer?
Clarify, public hearing?
Public hearing, yes.
Not open hearing?
Public hearing, yes.
Thank you.
September what?
9th.
Okay. Communic, uh, Council Paper Number 12,005,15, Communication Number 122 from Mayor Maxey, Presenting a Proclamation in Recognition of Overdose Awareness Day. Going to file the communication without objection. I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Maxey.
Thank you, President Sapienza. It's my honor to proclaim August 31st, 2025, International Overdose Awareness Day. Whereas overdose awareness day is recognized globally each year on August 31st to raise awareness of overdose, remember those who we've lost, and acknowledge the grief of family, friends, and communities left behind. And whereas the city of North Adams stands together with countless communities across the Commonwealth, the nation, and the world, in recognizing the devastating toll that overdose has taken on individuals of all ages, races, and backgrounds. Whereas substance use disorder is a chronic health condition that requires compassion, evidence-based treatment, and community support, and we must continue to work together to eliminate the stigma that presents individuals from seeking the help they need. And whereas the people of North Adams have shown extraordinary strength, resilience, and commitment in responding to this crisis, from first responders and healthcare providers, to families, advocates, and organizations dedicated in harm reduction, prevention, treatment, and recovery. And whereas overdose awareness day provides an opportunity to remember those who we lost, stand with those living in recovery, and to recommit ourselves in building a healthier, more compassionate community for all. I therefore, I Jennifer A. Maxey, Mayor of the city of North Adams, do hereby proclaim August 31st, 2025, as International Overdose Awareness Day. And I'd like to present this proclamation to Danielle and Becky from the Have Hope Recovery Center.
Moving on. Committee reports in minutes. Any committee reports minutes? Okay. Do we have no licenses? This time, I'm going to open, open forum. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you've reached your two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended. And as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand, and I will recognize you and ask you to step up to the microphone. Would you please step up to the microphone? Yes.
Hi, Josh Valiers, 18 and a half Hall Street. We heard tonight from councillors eager to ask Attorney Bard questions about procedure council rules. We obviously heard about the Airport Commission as well. I'm not here to touch that. But it did beg the question of availability of our city solicitor in the future. And, you know, a lot of questions were asked of the city solicitor, and it made me think of all the delays we've had over the years, and referring out agenda items to confer with our solicitor, and his office, his own of it. and referring out agenda items to confer with our solicitor, and his office's own, and his office's own availability. It reminded me of times before my own, when we had an in-house solicitor who had the availability to meet members of the council and the mayor, where they were at with less delay. And I think it could be a benefit to look into the potential of having an in-house solicitor in the future for our legal, you know, for our own legal opinions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Lillian Zavatsky, 441 East Main Street, North Adams. So, I'm coming today to ask if we could get an update on the sale of the Sullivan School Lot in Kemp Park. There was some discussion online. And in light of that discussion, I think it's helpful to have, if possible, report back. So back in March, I believe, at the end of March, this council approved the right of purchase of the Sullivan School Lot to Massmoca. It was my understanding that from the end of March, for 120 days, they were going to survey the lot and do their due diligence. And that 120-day period, if my math is correct, would end around the end of July. And so I was hoping if we can get an update on that, are they still doing their due diligence? And then a couple of other things came up, again, in this online discussion, but I think it's helpful, it's helpful for the council and the mayor to kind of restate things that you guys have already discussed, because not everyone in the public has been to all these meetings or is keeping track. So, one thing, this parcel, to be clear, we're talking about the Sullivan School parcel that is not including Kemp Park, that is not including the playground, the little league field, the basketball courts, and the forest between the basketball courts and Summit Ave. I just want to clarify that that's the case. And the other thing is that the residential portions of this plan would be taxed and would get that back onto the tax rolls. Again, that was part of discussion, I think it's helpful to kind of restate and reclarify those points, and an update would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step up to the mic, name and address for the record.
Michael Malazo, 91 Wheeler at Tartsburg.
Councilor Fitch, I appreciate you taking an interest in the airport. I appreciate you asking for Attorney Bard, as well as MassAeronautics, to be here. I'll point out, MassAeronautics did not show up. I will also point out, Mr. Bard showed up, knowing that there were questions about grant assurances. He hasn't even read the grant assurance, or couldn't speak appropriately to the, what's in the grant assurances. I also applaud Mr. Breen for calling him out on some of that stuff. He's still clueless, clueless as to what...
Really?
As to, this is my floor, as to what's in the, as to what's in...
Point of order, point of order. Let him continue his two minutes.
I would like my time back.
I will give you a minute and 30 seconds.
Thank you. He still didn't articulate that he has a grasp on what's in the grant assurance, or that he actually resolved anything as to whether what the mayor is doing is legal or not legal. And my only other point is, I've been saying right along that MassAeronautics and the FAA can come in and either make you come into compliance, or make you pay back the money that you've taken from them if you do not come back into compliance, and do not correct your issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further open forum? Mayor? Mayor's updates?
Lillian?
I will get back to you on your questions, and we will have an update at the next meeting. I can say, with Sullivan School, we have extended the due diligence period. We've come across some things that needed more time for them. And we also are working on the act that would take some of the recreation space, which is more of an easement. That project does keep in the city's possession, the park, the back part where the house, little outhouse is, and the field. So, I can answer those questions right off the top of my head, but I can give you a more formal answer at the next meeting. My office has been fielding a lot of phone calls about what's happening of what we call the Billy Evans Bridge on the West End. Just a reminder to the community, that is a state project. It's my understanding that they came into some problems with the pillars that sit in the river, and that's why that project has been halted. I don't have a time span as to when it will be restarted. We are meeting with MassDOT on several other projects, and that is on the top of our list to get more information about that. But my understanding is there's been a design issue with the pillars in the river. And until that is worked out, the project has been halted. I did meet with Maximilian Construction this morning, and we will start construction on the Brown Street Bridge on or about September 15th, so we're very excited about that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. Liaison updates, councilor updates. Councilor Bona, did you have something to share with us?
Well, I was back to the mayor's concerns. I was wondering if you had an update on the Church Street properties.
So, as of Monday morning, all four parcels on Church Street are under contract. We have purchase and sales, we're waiting to schedule closing dates. Each property was sold individually and not as a bulk. Once we know that closings are real, I'll talk more about that. But we've signed purchase and sales agreements with everyone, and are in the process of scheduling closing dates.
Thank you. Any other councilor updates? Council Blackmore?
I have an update from the planning board. The planning board, as you know, we've changed some ordinance, and the planning board did not want to give up their right to input on the capital budget, so they set up a review process. They've created an ad hoc committee which met last night, and will be meeting again on the 4th of September. I just got notice of that. But this is the, these are the steps that they're going to follow. They're distributing the cap, the draft capital plan, following the August 18th Planning Board meeting. The draft capital plan that was included in the city budget will be distributed to the planning board members. So give planning board members time to review the document and formulate their questions prior to September 8th Planning Board meeting. Briefing on the capital planning process. At the September 8th, 2025 Planning Board meeting, the mayor and/or other representatives of the administration will, hopefully, that's my editorial, provide a presentation on the capital budget, how priorities are set, and other foundational information. Detailed discussion on the capital budget at the October 6th, 2025 Planning Board meeting. The board will take a deeper dive into the details of the capital plan. The mayor and/or other representatives of the administration would be present, hopefully, to support the discussion. The planning board may start to formulate recommendations at this point, finalize recommendations for submission to the mayor and city council at the November 10th, 2025 Planning Board meeting. The planning board will discuss any remaining questions and vote on their recommendations to the city council and mayor. The mayor and other represent, and/or other representatives from the administration will be present to support the discussion. Support city council deliberations on the capital budget, it may be helpful to have representatives of the planning board at the city council and/or city council committee meetings where the capital budget is discussed. So there's an ad hoc committee of three people that include Virginia Reel, Rye Howard, and Jesse Poirier, Egan, Egan Poirier, sorry. And that's, they had their meeting, I haven't looked at the notes, I just got a note saying they had their next meeting scheduled.
Okay, thank you. Council Shade?
Yes, through the chair to the mayor. First, I want to thank you for bringing us new information on the airport and giving us these updates, and bringing Attorney Bard into the room. Speaking of our boards and commissions, which was brought up during that time, at our next meeting, could we have an update on any openings on our boards and commissions?
Absolutely.
Hopefully fill some of those vacant seats. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have a couple of, go ahead, Council Fitch.
Yeah, thank you. I have a couple as well. One, I'd love for us to exhibit constructive behavior in this room. And I brought this up before, I just, I'm gonna read the definition of emotional regulation right now, because it got a little bit heated in here tonight, and I understand a lot of people's nerves get struck when certain things come up, myself included. But emotional regulation is the process of managing your emotions to maintain balance and respond to situations in an appropriate adaptive way. It involves strategies like mindfulness, cognitive reappraisal, and taking a pause before reacting to difficult events. When we act up in this room, I think it makes us look bad, and I think it makes our city look bad to people who are watching. So, that being said, a couple of other updates. One, reiterating what Councilor Shade said about joining boards and commissions. It is so important, and several of our boards and commissions have struggled historically to find members who want to get involved. Reminder to all members of the public, anybody, any resident of North Adams, to my understanding, is able to submit an application through the city's website. You can go to Boards and Commissions, you can reach out to Mayor Maxey, you can reach out to any of us, and we'll talk to you about our experiences with joining boards and commissions. And the idea is to just step up for the city. Some of them have a lighter load than others. A lot of them have members who are either waiting to get off for a new person to come on, or have a vacancy already, but we'll learn about that in the next meeting. And then one final thing, as some of you are already aware, last week, I took a train, or rode a bicycle, or walked across the state along the path of the Northern Tier Passenger Rail Restoration Project. The last time that we've had passenger rail here in North Adams was in 1958. The project, which MassDOT completed a study for last year, to my recollection, is moving on to another stage. My ask right now is that the members in this room, and any other community leaders who are interested in supporting this project, help to write letters of support that can be submitted, along with the governor, to the Corridor ID Program, which is an intercity passenger rail planning and development program that guides intercity passenger rail development through the country, and creates a pipeline of intercity passenger rail projects ready for implementation. So this would be on to the funding stage to explore federal funding. So, everybody here in the room, I sent councilors and the mayor an sample letter of support. If anybody in the public, to business owners, community leaders of any kind, are interested in doing so as well, you can reach out to me or write a letter on your own behalf to the governor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other? Okay, I have a couple of items. This is, upcoming is Labor Day weekend, and following Labor Day weekend is that one thing that parents all over rejoice in, kids will be going back to school. And with kids...
They're already back.
There, some of them are, yeah. But anyways, kids will be going back to school, or they're already back already. Watch out for school buses, pedestrians, maintain your 20 miles an hour through the school zones. Current school zones are East Main Street, and I believe that is the only one right now, I think is the only one active, because Graylock School is not open, so that one is not active. Also, I've been noticing a lot of people riding their bicycles, e-bikes, e-scooters, on sidewalks in the downtown area. It's very dangerous, somebody's going to get hit, and I ask people that they use caution in using those items on the down, in the downtown area, or anywhere, in any of the neighborhoods within the city. And lastly, I feel very strongly that we have rules in place to allow the public to speak for two minutes. We may not agree with what the member of the public is addressing, no matter what the topic is, but it's our obligation to at least listen. We may not agree, but at least listen. And again, we do not deliberate during those times. And you do, as councilors, during councilor updates and during the discussion of the item, you can rebut at that point in time, but there is no discussion between the public and the councilors unless it's a public hearing. So I just wanted to remind everybody about that. City clerk updates. Madam Clerk, do you have any updates for us? None this week.
Question?
Council Breen?
There was a, you sent an email on the website, it's not updating, last week. You, you said that, what's the status on that?
That's, that's all set now.
Okay. The reason I ask is today, there was a school committee meeting, and it referenced the 5:45 executive meeting, but I don't think the 6 o'clock was posted, and I don't think we got an email.
There were two on there. I know there were two on there, because there was one right after the other, because one was under the executive board, and one was under, or the executive board meeting, and one was under just the regular school committee meeting, because there were two separate agendas that came in. So if it's a, I'll look at it.
Okay.
I know for a fact that they were posted, because when we were having that problem, I went through, and I double-checked each one, and noted that they were there. So I'll check, and if something disappeared again, I'll reach out to IT.
Thank you. All right. Correspondents? I have a letter here from our counselor Morrow, and I hate to say that she'll be leaving us effective September 1st. And I will read her letter, and I have a few words to say. Dear council, dear fellow councilors, Mayor Maxey, and community members, I have decided to resign my position as city councilor on September 1st. Unfortunately, circumstances have arisen that require my attention elsewhere. It is a bittersweet decision that does not come easily. I thank the community for having their trust in me to serve this beautiful city, my fellow councilors for being there for guidance, and for the great years I had serving with you and Mayor Maxey, for leading with confidence and a love for the city that goes above and beyond. I have learned so much from this position, and will take, and will take all that knowledge with me wherever I end up next. Would love, Councilor Morrow. And I want to say, Councilor Morrow, I want to thank you for your city, uh, service to the city of North Adams, and to your work on the Public Safety Commission, and we will all miss you, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I say a few words too?
Very certainly.
Um, just to add to that, yeah, as I said in the letter, thank you. Some circumstances came up where I couldn't do the position anymore, but I am still excited to watch and to see what all my fellow councilors do for the rest of the year. Also, I wanted to say, good luck with the elections for some of the new people who are in or are here today, and the incumbents. You truly do learn a lot from this job, and you're able to do a lot of good and make a lot of change, which I'm happy to have been a part of. And you've already done so much good work as a council, and I'm excited to see what's done in the future. And, yeah, I've had a good time on this council, learned a lot, and I'm excited to see where the rest of the year goes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else on, okay. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.